I call the 3:00 PM session of the Henry County Board of Supervisors regular meeting to order. Like to welcome all of our visitors, remind you that if you want to address the board specifically on the agenda, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the Agenda item, matters presented by the public that will take up later in the meeting this evening. Again, welcome everyone. Thank you for coming out and participating in your county government. Our first item on the agenda for consideration is Agenda item number five, the Items of Consent. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, if no additions are correct, then I make a motion we approve the items of consent.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero. Jennifer, Agenda item number six, we'll have a monthly report on the delinquent tax collection efforts. We have with us County Treasurer Scott Grinstaff. Welcome, Scott.
Good afternoon. This is a report for end of March, March 31st, 2023. Personal property collection, we collected eighty-seven point seventy-four percent of the 2022 taxes. This is our first report of the 2022 with us having the February 6th deadline this year. During the month of March, we collected nine hundred seventeen thousand seventy-nine dollars. Real estate collection as of March 31st, we collected ninety-three point six nine percent of the twenty-two real estate taxes. During the month of March, we collected four hundred twenty-four thousand eight hundred fifty-nine dollars. Since January 1 of 2023, TACS has collected two hundred eighty thousand sixteen dollars. And so far for the month of April, we have four VRW stops. And the debt set off number there hasn't changed in a while. I guess all the taxes are filed.
Anyone have anything for Mr. Grinstaff this time? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number seven, an update from the Martinsville Henry County Economic Development Corporation. We have with us Mark Heath. Mark, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For our monthly, April monthly update, in our business development division, we'll have, or have to have, coming up on May 4th, small business marketing workshop. Beth Marshall of our staff is reviewing marketing materials, working with individual small businesses to help them improve their brand and make suggestions on how to better market their businesses. You can see the four inquiries we've had. Valerie Harper works very hard, does a lot of SWAM certifications and recertifications. Much of that work continues. She's had, Valerie's had fourteen site visits. You can see the variety of type of companies that she has been with and met with. And several of these are with Valerie, represented from the Virginia Economic Partnership that comes periodically and calls on companies. Valerie attended the CT signing ceremony, Patrick and Henry. There's, she attended bookkeeping workshop for small business development. And was that the John Red, that's true, it's John Red, that's his partner there. In our marketing divisions, Spencer Johnson created a monthly unemployment report that sued out his tax back. The county unemployment went down a little bit again this month. There are twenty, in February, there are twenty-three thousand four hundred forty-two people working in the county. Spencer was also been involved in Go Virginia's control and environmental strategy for Region Three, working there. He's created, worked with Mr. Wagner to do several exhibits on unemployment and labor issues that were used as part of your planning for your budget sessions this year. He's done some detailed regional occupational wage data that was requested by Eastman and has updated all of our sites on Virginia, Virginia Economic Partnership in their database. Currently, we have no existing buildings for marketing. It's one of the first times in my, or really is the first time in my experience here where we've had nothing marked from a building sample. So it's a good thing. Things are full. In tourism, our staff conducted thirty site visits. You can see all of those listed there. We had fifteen phone calls requesting information from a variety of states. They were from Virginia, but from New Hampshire, California, and other states. Very busy distributing, doing bulk distribution of our activity guide. Six hundred fifty were distributed to none of these third businesses. We've also had regional distribution at visitor centers around the state. Some other meetings that Comfort Inn has been up, the ones there was the branding change. It was the James, that was a long time ago. As I said, Kamala Boulevard is now Comfort Inn. Rooms have been updated. Our staff, as they normally do, go out and visit with hotels to help them market. Also, the tour John Red, those partners, attended Virginia Tourism Conference, Conference on Agribusiness, and sponsored, and attended a short garden tour day, the Wednesday that everybody was there. Pam did it well. It continues to be used by a bit over three thousand people were there in March. You can see the social media things that are being taken, being updated constantly. And a small business feature was nude photography in social media, highlighted farmer's life and other clown scenarios. You can see advertising, we're doing an ad in the Sharp region, Good Housekeeper in May, printed three hundred fifty table, new table attempts, advertising Visit Martinsville, and a mobile app that have gone to twenty-seven businesses. And there's been a hundred and thirty-five percent increase in total users with over a thousand. A to use on the mobile app, which has been very successful since that rolled out. And some additional pop-up advertising banners that will be placed in various places around the community. Our workforce development division, that's their Hodges runs that, is completing, or is completing the final edits for 2023 relocation guide. We've met with Virginia Tourism Corporation to discuss business, tourism, zone gap financing. And we continue, and certainly continues to meet with a number of hotel services that we've given a good background.
Mark, let me ask you something. The last time we talked about the brochures that you were updating for the visitor centers, particularly eighty-one and all, has that been done?
That's the relocation, yeah, yes.
So that is the relocation guide?
That's what goes to the visitor center.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mark. Agenda item number eight, adoption of the FY 2023-24 Henry County Budget. Mr. Wagner.
This meeting is designated on the budget calendar for the adoption of the fiscal year 2024 budget. The board has no additional changes and wishes to proceed with the adoption today. There are several actions that are necessary, including setting the tax rates, adopting the school budget, and adopting the total county budget. And in your packet, there are three separate motions that will facilitate that, and those are listed in bulk prep, if you wish to do that today.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wagner. With that, the board's had an opportunity to not only have the budget presented, a work session, a public hearing, and time to review. What motion would you like to carry forward at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to have the board adopt the following tax rates for fiscal year 24. Real estate, point five 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 cents per one hundred dollar assessed value. Personal property and machinery and tools, a dollar fifty-five per one hundred of assessed value for personal property, including motor vehicles, and a dollar fifty-five per one hundred of assessed value for machinery and tools/business equipment. Motor vehicle license fees, cars, twenty dollars and seventy-five cents, motorcycles, twelve dollars, and trailers, twelve dollars.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. Likewise, if you'll scroll down, there is a verbatim motion as required for the next. If someone would move on that.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to have the board adopt the proposed budget for school expenditures for fiscal year 24 by category as summarized in Exhibits A and B, subject to the state, federal, and local funds becoming available as estimated.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. And one more that we need to complete this.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to have the board adopt the proposed fiscal year 24 budget for fiscal planning purposes as summarized in Exhibits A and B. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number nine, consideration of proclamation declaring May 14th through 20th of 2023 as National Peace Officers Memorial Week in Henry County. Mr. Wagner.
Your staff has prepared a proclamation for your consideration declaring National Peace Officers Memorial Week in Henry County. National Peace Officer Memorial Week is a time set aside to pay tribute to local, state, and federal law enforcement officers who have made an ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. In addition, the board and the public are invited to attend a local memorial service on Wednesday, May 17th, at 11:00 AM at the Martinsville City Municipal Building.
Ms. Buchanan, I believe you have a proclamation to read for the board's consideration.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is a proclamation of the Henry County Board of Supervisors. Whereas the Board of Supervisors, our families, our friends, our neighbors, all have the good fortune to live in Henry County. And whereas, a major reason for that peace of mind is the quality law enforcement provided by the men and women of the Henry County Sheriff's Office, who will help create and maintain the wonderful quality of life that we enjoy, and put themselves at risk each day so that the citizens of Henry County can enjoy without fear the opportunities afforded them in this great community. And whereas, six Henry County law enforcement officers, John Hughes Mitchell, George S. Frame, John J. Johnston, Willis Herman Ferguson, George Melvin Brown, and Paul Edward Grubb have given their lives in the line of duty. And whereas, in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation which designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which that date falls as Police Week. May 14th through the 20th, 2023, has been set aside to remember these fallen heroes across the nation. On Wednesday, May 17th, a locally joint Peace Officers Memorial Service will be held at the City of Martinsville Municipal Building in the City Council Chambers at 11:00 AM, and is a time to recognize the sacrifices made nationally and locally by the brave men and women of law enforcement, particularly our six fallen officers. Now therefore, be it proclaimed on this 25th day of April 2023 that the Henry County Board of Supervisors declares May 14th through May 20th, 2023 to be the National Peace Officers Memorial Week in Henry County. Furthermore, the board realizes that while a mere "thank you" is inadequate to convey the true feelings of this community toward the Henry County Sheriff's Office, the hope is that these heroic men and women accept our deepest devotion and admiration for themselves, their profession, and their six brethren who made the ultimate sacrifice. Signed, Jim Adams, Chairman, Henry County Board of Supervisors.
Second.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the proclamation.
I am so sorry. Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. I'm going to ask Vice Chairman Bryant and Ms. Buchanan if they will present this on the half of the Board of Supervisors. And I'm going to ask Captain Wayne Davis, he will come forward to receive this on behalf of the Sheriff's Department.
Certainly, on behalf of Henry County, I'd like to include this proclamation. This is for the members of the six officers who do the line of duty in Henry County. And once I've sure of it now, if you can do it for the whole of this is in Henry County, I'd say it's also much for our service.
Do we get this served in front of the seal?
Do you want to offer any words, Captain Nuts?
I would just say thank you to the board for recognizing the sacrifice of these officers, and thank you to the families of these officers who have had to experience the negative effects of this sacrifice. And we pray that no family nor officer at the Henry County Sheriff's Office, nor anywhere else, ever has to experience this again. And we are thankful for every officer, every deputy we have at the Henry County Sheriff's Office, the service they provide to this community every day, and the personal sacrifices they make for your communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 10 will take up Financial Matters. 10A, an additional appropriation referencing the U.S. Department of Justice Bulletproof Vess Partnership Program for the Sheriff's Office. Mr. Wagner.
Sheriff Perry is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of twenty-five thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars received from the U.S. Department of Justice Bulletproof Vess Partnership Program. The grant funds will help reduce ballistic, will help replace ballistic vests within the Sheriff's Office. The grant requires over fifty percent match, which will be used for current operating funds.
In regard to this appropriation, what is the desire of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the additional appropriation, twenty-five thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars for the Bulletproof Vess Partnership Program.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. 10B, an additional appropriation referencing the U.S. Department of Justice State Criminal Alien Assistance Program Grant for the Sheriff's Office. Mr. Wagner.
Sheriff Perry is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of sixteen thousand sixty-seven dollars received from the U.S. Department of Justice State Criminal Alien Assistance Program Grant. The grant funds will be used to pay for deputy overtime, workforce recruitment and retention, training and education for inmates and staff, and other purposes covered within the grant guidelines.
Okay, as part of your working papers, you have the background, other than what Mr. Wagner has read. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriations of sixteen thousand sixty-seven dollars received from the U.S. Department of Justice State Criminal Alien Assistance Program as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. 10C, an additional appropriation referencing the Asset Forfeiture Funds for the Sheriff's Office. Mr. Wagner.
Sheriff Perry is asking the board to approve an additional appropriation of thirty-seven thousand dollars for state asset forfeiture funds to purchase defensive tactics and fitness equipment to be placed at the adult detention center. Sheriff Perry has indicated that the equipment will provide an opportunity for increased defensive tactics training and assist deputies with their physical fitness and overall health.
In regard to this additional appropriation, what is the desire of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board to approve the additional appropriation of thirty-seven thousand from the state asset forfeiture funds for the purchase of defensive tactics and fitness equipment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. 10D, an award of contract referencing the engineering design services for Reservoir Road, and this is for the Engineering and Mapping Department. Mr. Wagner.
10B, Director of the Engineering and Mapping Department is asking the board to award a contract to Timmons Group in the amount of three hundred seventy-eight thousand five hundred nineteen dollars for engineering and design services as it relates to the reconstruction and upgrade of Reservoir Road. Timmons Group was selected for this project following a competitive request for proposal process. The project has been approved by the Virginia Department of Transportation and funds from the Appalachian Regional Commission as previously appropriated for this purpose.
In regard to awarding of this contract, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we award a contract to Timmons Group for three hundred seventy-eight thousand five hundred nineteen dollars as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. 10E, an additional appropriation referencing the transfer of FY 23 funds for capital improvement items. Mr. Wagner.
During the recent budget presentation, I recommended using current year funds along with fiscal year 22's school carryover funds totaling one million seventy-four thousand dollars for the purchase of much-needed capital improvement items. And those items are listed there in your packet for you. In order to move forward with the purchase of these capital items, staff has prepared two transfer appropriations for your consideration.
In regard to this additional appropriation, what action would the board like to take?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of one million seventy-four thousand for the purchase of the capital, I think it's eight capital items that has been presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. 10F, an additional appropriation referencing the S E E D Beautification Program for Planning, Zoning, and Inspections Department. Mr. Wagner.
Lee Clark, the Director of Planning, Zoning, and Inspections, has requested the board to appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars received from the Harvest Foundation for their continued participation in the seed beautification program. The funds will be used to maintain sponsor gardens on Greensboro Road and Irishburg Road.
In regard to this additional appropriation, what is the desire of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move we appropriate the twenty-five thousand received from the Harvest Foundation for the seed program as requested.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. That takes us to Agenda item number 11, informational items. And I'll begin by taking comments from the board, starting with Mr. Zare, if he has any.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dillon.
Yes, sir. Just want to recognize that tomorrow's Administrative Professionals Day, and definitely want to thank Ms. Julie Shelton, Ms. Jennifer Gregory, and all of those who serve in that capacity to make sure that, you know, we can, and Dale and his team can do what they do on a daily basis. So definitely want to appreciate you all, and thank you for what you do to make Henry County as successful as it can be. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bryant.
No, sir.
Ms. Buchanan.
No, sir.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
And I did not have any. Mr. Wagner.
Just a couple of minor things. Each month in your packet, we include reports from Parks and Recreation, Public Safety, and other departments. Particularly the Parks and Rec Department. In March, our senior services division offered forty-seven programs that had nine hundred and fourteen seniors participate. And we'll continue to grow activities and programs for our seniors because of the new recreation center in Collinsville. A ribbon-cutting ceremony to mark the grand opening of the Henry County Recreation Center is scheduled for May 3rd at noon at the facility located at 395 West John Ray Boulevard in Collinsville. And we're hopeful that you're able to attend that event. Roger and his staff has put together a lot of work in the building, and it's going to be a great place to offer activities to our seniors. So hopefully you can come to Henry County. That's all.
Of course, Dale, now, you know, for those may not know, that's the former YMCA in Collinsville.
Yes.
In regard to programs for the seniors, I have heard from three different individuals over the recent bus trip that they took to the Greenbrier. Evidently, it left a strong impression on all those that made that trip. So I think different ones look forward to that. With that, that takes us to Agenda item number 12. Someone will cite the items as allowed by the Code of Virginia that will allow us to go into a closed meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the board convene in an enclosed meeting as permitted under the following sections. Under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act 2.23711A1, for discussion of appointees to the Blue Ridge Regional Library Board, Parks and Recreation Board, Community Policy and Management Team, Economic Development Corporation, Henry Martinsville Department of Social Services, Patrick and Henry Community College Board, Piedmont Regional Community Services Board, Southern Area Agency on Aging Board, and the Southside Community Action Board. 2.23711A7, for discussion of pending legal matters. 2.23711A3, for discussion of acquisition-disposal real estate. 2.23711A5, for discussion of as-yet unannounced industries.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Six zero, Jennifer. I'll see you all upstairs in five minutes. Motion by Mr. Slaughter and second by Ms. Buchanan. Mr. Powell, will you uphold the board?
Yes, sir. Board members, the best of your knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements in the Code of Virginia, Section 2.23711, were heard, discussed, or considered in closed meeting. How do you vote? Mr. Adams?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryant, I believe that you have a board appointment for the board's consideration.
Yes, sir, I do. Let me get to it up here. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we reappoint Donna Ree Stone for a period of three years to the Southern Area Agent on Aging Board. Expiration date's going to be June the 1st, 2026.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. Mr. Dillon, I believe that you have something for the board's consideration.
Yes, sir. I would like to make a motion that we approve the Axton Solar Siding Agreement.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I do have a discussion. As we have talked about it, approximately two years ago, we as the Board of Supervisors had Lee Clark come to us with a recommendation on setting up a solar ordinance for companies just wishing to put solar projects in Henry County. The ordinance was agreed upon in a five-mile radius of two-point-five percent in a five-mile radius. Which, when Axton Solar Farm got approval of it, my understanding was, is that it was going to be in the two-point-five percent area out of the five-mile radius. The new siding agreement, which is on the board before us now, adds an additional ninety-three acres on to that. Myself personally, I am worried that by setting up a perimeter where we allow them to have ninety-three more acres would open up the door for other companies, other solar companies that are seeking to put solar farms in Henry County, that it would open up, I call it a Pandora box, but it would open it up for other companies to come in saying, well, you allowed Axton Solar Company to have the ninety-three acres. Can we have a hundred acres, or eighty acres, or whatever? And if we refuse to do that, then we may be opening ourselves up for litigation. And I did check, as, I don't know if Mr. Lous liked to comment on that, about the litigation part on it, but it is a highly competitive market, the solar farm is. And we can see how much effort it is to try to get solar companies in this area, or solar companies throughout the United States basically, but especially here in this part of the region. What I'm scared of is that we're going to find ourselves in litigation with a lot of these companies if we turn them down for additional properties. We in good faith set this ordinance up about two years ago. You know, all, I'm not sure Mr. Dillon was on the board at the time, I don't think he was, but five- was, but five of the supervisors was on that board, and we all agreed to it and voted for it to put this ordinance in effect. Now, having said that, if we're going to change that ordinance, why did we set the ordinance the way that we had it? You know, my firm belief is that the ordinance is set, we ought to follow the ordinance that's in effect right now.
Mr. Lous, in regard to the additional acreage requested, would you define that in regard to the total acreage?
So the board zoning appeals approved a project of four hundred and thirty-five acres, and up to four hundred and thirty-five acres, but they said it has to be within the solar ordinance, which what Mr. Bryant's referencing is the two-point-five percent of acreage that can be covered in a five-mile radius can be no more than two-point-five percent under our ordinance. And the point of measurement, when it is determined how much you can have, is at the submission of a site plan. So the board's zoning appeals approved four hundred and thirty-five acres, but when a site plan is submitted, it will be then compared to what's in the radius around the proposed project in Henry County, and it will be determined if they have more than two-point-five percent. And the ninety-three acres that Mr. Bryant's referring to is it's projected because of projects already under development, projects proposed for development, it's projected that it could be about ninety-three acres in Henry County that would be in excess of two-point-five percent, which would place the project at about two-point-six percent in its, in the radius at the time of site. But of course, that's not a known for sure because we don't know what other, what the status of other site submissions will be and other developments, so you don't really know. But it was in the negotiations, the project, the developers wanted the assurance that they could build out the whole four hundred and thirty-five acres, even if it went slightly over the solar ordinance restrictions, because in his description, a lot of, you know, expense and effort goes into planning this, and at that last, at the late stage of submitting the site plan, they want to be guaranteed they could have the full project developed. That's, that was their motivation in putting it in the agreement and in the negotiations.
So the projection, it's not fact?
Yeah, we don't know exactly, you know, what, how much they'll put in Henry County versus, it's also in Pennsylvania County, how much will be in each county. We don't know exactly the status of other projects at that time in the future, but that's the measurement point, is that site plan submission, and when it's compared to what's in that radius. And if it was over, under just the BZA conditions, they would have to reduce their project if it was over. But with our siding agreement, which the law, the state law allows, we, what's negotiated in the proposed siding agreement is that they would be allowed to develop the four hundred and thirty-five regardless of the comparison to the other projects.
But it does not go outside of four hundred and thirty-five?
It does not. It is not. And it's the same plan the BZA approved, but with, the BZA put the asterisks on it. Well, when you submit your site plan, if it's over the two-point-five percent, you can't have the full four thirty-five.
Okay. Any other comments?
Well, just a couple of things. You know, I think, one, you mentioned good faith, and, you know, we charged George and Dale and their team to negotiate a siding agreement, and, you know, they did some good work with that, and, you know, so I think we have to, you know, think about that as well, and, you know, that ninety-three acres, you know, of course, is in that Irishwood District, and, you know, we've had the citizens, you know, speak on that, and I think the Irishwood District citizens are in favor of that, and I do, you know, understand where Mr. Bryant is coming from, but, you know, we also have, you know, authority moving forward on, you know, future siding agreements and things of that nature, and, you know, I think that, you know, this is one that we've, you know, charged folk to work on and work with, and would be a good opportunity to, you know, for the county, for citizens of Henry County. So those are just, you know, my comments on that.
Any other comments?
Can I?
Yes, sir.
I have no, I have no problem. Let's get this straight. I have no problem with Axton Solar Farm setting a, a solar farm in Irishburg District. I have no problem with that at all, because that's what we actually agreed to in the ordinance that we set up, is that we would agree to a certain percentage in a five-mile radius. You know, I just look at the possibility of, of damage that's going to be done to, to the area, and other companies coming to us asking for more acreage and ended up in legal battles because we changed the ordinance, or didn't change it, but we amended the ordinance to compensate the ninety-three acres, you know, for, for Axton. I'm just, I just see that as, as a problem. That's, that's just me, you know. I, you know, I run a business myself, I've been there fifty-one years next month. I, I know from experience, if you make acceptance to the rules, it's going to bite you every time.
Any other comments?
Well, it's like any other ordinance. I mean, it, it's written and it's, it's supposed to be enforced, and if it's not, it's not. It's not worth the paper it's written on. So I, I don't understand the real problem. I mean, we say ninety-three acres, and you say it's less than one-tenth of a percent, but that's a fourth of four hundred and thirty-five acres closed, so I don't see why it ain't a whole lot of, a whole lot of difference there than instead of two-point-six percent.
So the two-point-five percent is a comparison, so in, in a five-mile square radius, you would have approximately a little over fifty thousand acres. If it was all in Henry County, you'd have approximately fifty thousand acres, and so two-point-five percent is twelve hundred acres. This project is not all in Henry County, so the Henry County part is maybe like thirty-eight thousand acres, if I'm remembering correctly, and so you only get, that would be like less than a thousand acres, and so I, I'm relying on my math from Mr. Clark, but when I asked him, he said it would get them to about two-point-six percent over when you compare it to that five, but it's, so it's, it's, you know, it's still a small number of what's in that total area, which is, you know, so the four hundred and thirty-five acres is only, is being compared to a thirty-eight thousand acre parcel. That's why, that's why it didn't go up as much as you might think. That's, that's what Mr. Clark said.
And I think to the point of, you know, adjusting, amending, you know, we have many businesses, and I've only been on the board for roughly a year and a half, but I would imagine that there are ordinances that we have in regards to industries coming here, and when they choose not to come here for a particular reason, that there's been some negotiating to draw those industries here, and this is a very similar situation, you know, you want to draw someone here, so you do make adjustments and concessions, and I would assume Mr. Bryant is a businessman, if you get a great business deal, that you'd be willing to make some concessions, some adjustments, so that you don't lose that, you know, that big deal because we're so, you know, tied to, you know, an arbitrary two-point-five percent. And that's an arbitrary number that, you know, Mr. Clark developed, and there is no state guideline or no particular reason for that. And then the other part to that is, you know, part of it is in Henry, in Pennsylvania County. So I think in this particular case, it's different, and if other solar farm companies came through and had that conversation, you know, the difference is, is that part of this land is in Pennsylvania County, which really doesn't completely give them that five-mile radius to work with. So those are talking points that we could have in those conversations if it got to that point, so, you know, just kind of, you know, some thoughts, my thoughts on some of those conversations.
Well, you know, this, in this particular situation, we do have an ordinance that is set up for that. That's, that's what that ordinance is for. The other, we don't have the ordinance for. This particular thing, we do have an ordinance that we actually voted for. You know, that's the difference. We have an ordinance set that tells us five miles, two-point-five percent in that radius. Now, if, if there's a five-mile radius in Henry County, can they not set up what they need in that five-mile radius?
Well, that's part of the problem, is that that five-mile radius in this case is not in Henry County. A good portion of it is in Pennsylvania County, and I think, you know, going back and probably looking at the original ordinance, maybe that should have been a conversation was, you know, that five-mile radius is in Henry County, but when you start looking at Pennsylvania County and you're cutting out, you know, I don't know what numbers he said, but a thousand or how many other acres he said, and you're cutting out, even if it's just a thousand, but now they're asking for ninety-three acres, you know, you know, they're still not even close to that two-point-five percent in a five-mile radius in Henry County. Their two-point-five percent includes Henry County and Pennsylvania County, and I think, you know, that's something to consider in this instance, is that this is not just affected by what's in Henry County, but it's affected by what's in Pennsylvania County, which, and I don't know if, when that ordinance was developed, if that was a part of the conversation or not, is that if, you know, that five-mile radius goes into Pennsylvania County, it impacts Henry County, and if it wasn't discussed, or if it had been discussed, would it have been written differently?
I don't see where our ordinance could do anything with Pennsylvania County or something. I mean, we don't have any control of them.
Yeah, but the circle, if you remember when we looked at the maps, the circle cuts off of Pennsylvania County.
What they're doing is taking it.
You got like, what, thirty percent of the lands in Pennsylvania County, but it doesn't count towards the two-point-five percent, so you automatically got a smaller area if you're going by the center.
So basically, instead of two-point-five percent in a five-mile radius, you're looking at a two-point-five percent in maybe, you know, three, three, three-and-a-half mile radius, so, you know, already, you know, that is not congruent with what the ordinance is saying, because the ordinance is two-point-five percent in five miles, but this is only really like three-point-five miles or so.
Mr. Lous, will you?
Yes, sir.
Bring us to the date of, not specifically date, it's until a calendar date, as to the whole idea or concept behind siding agreements and, and what they were, what latitude that they give any board agreeing to a siding agreement.
So the, I mean, siding agreements are a creation of the General Assembly for counties in Virginia, obviously largely rural counties, which is where solar panels are going, and they allow the local counties to, even after the land use process, it's related to but not directly covered by the land, you know, we've always had land use where the board of zoning appeals issue special use permits, in this case for these type of projects, but this is beyond that. This is basically, the General Assembly gave this board the authority to negotiate agreements with developers of these type projects of certain sizes that allow this board to give, number one, exceptions to their, the board's own ordinances, number two, make, could make additional requirements if they wanted to and were agreed to by the developer, and number three, obtain cash payments from the developers in exchange for the impacts or for the county's discretionary use largely. These are analogous, I mean, other urban counties in Virginia have, for many years, have been able to get cash payments from residential developers and others to offset impacts on the county, and this is the first time that cash proffers, they're not calling them proffers, but essentially cash proffers are being allowed for rural counties on these type of projects. But, but that's where, and this is not a very old law, I mean, maybe two years or so, the General Assembly gave local governments the siding agreement authority, and actually a requirement to negotiate these agreements with projects of a certain size.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion fails on two to four. Jennifer. Mr. Wagon, do you have anything prior to us taking a recess?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments.
Yes, sir.
If this is not out of order. Just, you know, wanted to follow up with that and just, and hope I'm not out of order, and, you know, I'm not about causing commotion or tension, but I do think it's important to state that we did have a public hearing, we did have, you know, citizens from the Irishwood District come out, they spoke, they spoke loudly, and I think that, you know, as you mentioned, Mr. Bryant, that, you know, we're going into dangerous territory when we, you know, approve something like this. I think we're also going into dangerous territory when we freestyle and do what is our personal opinions, especially when it, you know, involves a certain particular district. So we have to be careful because public, public hearings are for the purpose of hearing what the citizens are, what their desire is, what their expectations are, what they would like, and we had an overwhelming, resounding number of citizens come out and, you know, it wasn't even close, and I think we have to be careful, because if we're asking people to come out and to speak at these public hearings, and then we're going to, you know, go and do something completely different, you know, what becomes the purpose of a public hearing? What becomes the purpose of people coming out and participating in their local government when a local government is not listening? So I, I think that, you know, hopefully we all can reflect on that, and this is not about, you know, any emotional feelings, but it is just a, a thought, you know, that's why we have public hearings, and we know that, you know, there may be things that, you know, the citizens want that may not be in the best interest of the county, and, you know, I don't see where there's anything in this particular situation that, you know, it's not environmentally unsafe, it's not something that's going to, you know, damage the community, so to, you know, vote against that, you know, we have to question, you know, am I putting myself above what the citizens of Henry County, the people that I was voted to represent, and I'm a representative of Henry County, so we have to, you know, consider that, you know? Am I putting myself above what the, the interest of the people, the best interest of the people and their folk in Irishwood District who, you know, have land that, you know, they want to invest, you know, just as other businessmen, they want to invest and, you know, get a return on that investment, and this was a great opportunity for that. I don't know what the next steps will be, but I do hope that, you know, we consider those things and not just, you know, our personal feelings, personal emotions, you know, personally how we feel about, you know, the particular solar farms, so just wanted, you know, make sure I mention that tonight.
Okay. Mr. Dillon, let me, let me clarify myself here now. This is not a personal motion that I made. It's not personal at all. Matter of fact, I am for the Axton Solar Project. I'm not against the Axton Solar Project. I'm just against the ninety-three acres. If they, if you want to sit down or negotiate, I don't mind them at all. I'm just saying the ninety-three acres is, is the, is the hit's point for me. It's not a personal item, I don't have anything to do with it. It is, it is what we have voted for our ordinance, to set our ordinance up. Now, if we need to make an amendment, you get Lee Clark, see if Lee Clark wants to come to us to make an amendment or change the ordinance that we got in effect now, then we can look at that. But right now, we have an ordinance in effect. That ordinance is in effect right now. So we are following the ordinance that is set before us through the county, through the BZA board, agreed to it, come to us, we voted on it, and it says five-mile radius, two-point-five percent. I have no problem with that whatsoever.
And I think if, you know, if that's the case, then everything that we do, we have to make sure that we, you know, don't make concessions, we don't adjust, we don't, you know, and that's part of what you do as a government, is you look at, you know, and, you know, like I said, that was arbitrary numbers, you know, that Lee came up with, you know, because other places have different ordinances, so, you know, I think that's part of, you know, we look at the whole, and, you know, but, you know, I'm not going to go, you know, back and forth because everybody has their opinion, and, you know, we voted, but I felt like that was important to say, because we do have public hearings, and they are for a purpose, they are for a reason, and in this case, you know, I hope we can go back and look at that ordinance and, you know, let's shift everything so that it involves only Henry County, and Pennsylvania County doesn't have an impact on what we do in Henry County.
I'll declare a recess at five oh seven, and I'll see you all at our six P M. I'll call the six P M. session of the Henry County Board of Supervisors, April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three meeting, back to order from our recess of the afternoon session. Like to welcome all of our visitors. Remind you, if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings that may put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the agenda item, matters presented by the public later in tonight's meeting, that is agenda item number sixteen. Again, welcome everyone, thank you for coming out and participating in your county government. At the same time as this meeting is going on, agenda item thirteen, there is a public hearing taking both verbal and written comments in one of the meeting rooms just outside the door, and that is for VDOT, and it's a six-year secondary road plan, it's an open format, and of course, they are there to receive any comments that anyone has. That will go from six till six-thirty. And then, of course, they will come in a little later, and we'll have general highway matters, that's actually agenda item number seventeen. matters, that's actually agenda item number seventeen. That takes us to agenda item number fourteen, public hearing of a rezoning application, R-23-07, 3651 LLC slash John Reno. We have with us our Director of Planning and Zoning, Mr. Lee Clark, Mr. Clark.
Okay, this property is located on the south side of Fontaine Drive and southwest corner of Fontaine Drive and Texel Drive, it's in the Ridgeway District, tax map numbers are 52454, is lots thirteen through eighteen, and the applicant's requesting a rezoning of approximately 2.1 acres from Commercial District B1 to Limited Industrial District I2. The applicant wishes to construct four warehouse units, approximately 4,000 square foot each. Before I go into the planning commission's recommendation, it was well received by the planning commission, the concept is something that the applicant described, and, and I have seen myself in other areas where these individual warehouses are put in at about the right size for contractors to use, you know, not large contractors, but smaller type contractors, that most of the time end up working out of their homes, their garages, their yards, that kind of thing. And the idea is this would give them an opportunity to rent a warehouse that's not oversized, has its own parking in front of it, and a dock door where they can get their deliveries of HVAC units, large supplies, whatever it is that they need. So, they meet there in the mornings, gather their employees, gather all of their supplies, and go to work. And I think it's a really neat concept, and hope that it takes off here in Henry County and is well received. Following the public hearing, both the planning commission and staff recommended approval of this request.
I will open a public hearing to take input on this rezoning case at 6:03 P.M. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning application? I have a brief policy statement as you come to the podium. This is a time for public comment, we welcome your participation in tonight's meeting, we're here to listen to you, if you care, by coming to the podium to address the board, and we know the subject matter, state the district in which you live, and by coming to the podium, you've agreed that you'll exhibit respect for the board, its members, and staff members. You will receive the same consideration from the board. Please try to keep your presentation to no more than five minutes, okay? Please identify yourself, please.
My name is John Reno, I'm the one who submitted the application, I don't live here, I live up in the state of Virginia. Clark beautifully explained what we're trying to do, this is not a foreign concept to us, we have six of these units in Augusta County that are doing really well, and it's just like what he talked about, a contractor needs a employee to take possession of a large bunch of stuff, and then he rallies his bin in the morning, and he goes out to work, and it's, it's a convenient way for, for a small contractor to stay in business. We do not plan to build all of our warehouses at once, we plan to build one, get it used, get it filled up, and we'll build the next, we're going to build up. Seems like a, a good way to begin, and if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer.
All right, thank you, Mr. Reno. Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against this application? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at 6:05 P.M. Mr. Zaire, I believe this is in your district?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move the board to approve the rezoning request as presented.
Second. We have a motion, second, any discussion? All in favor? It is five with one absent, Jennifer. Agenda item number fifteen, public hearing, rezoning application, R-23-08. Sienna Bolton, Mr. Clark.
Okay, this property is located on the east side of Meadowway Trail, just south of its intersection with Hodges Farm Road and the Horse Pasture District, tax map number here is 39639, section B, lot nine. The applicant has requested the rezoning of one lot from suburban residential district to mixed residential district, and the applicant wishes to place a double-wide manufactured home on this property, following public hearing, both the planning commission and staff recommended approval of this request.
I'll open public hearing at 6:06 to take input on this, with anyone desiring to speak, is there anyone that wishes to address the board on this rezoning application? Yes, ma'am?
I'm Seana Bolger, I'm the one that submitted the, the rezoning application. I'm really, I'm just a young mother that's trying to start a permanent foundation for my kids by getting a mobile home to put on there, that's all, thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else desiring to speak on this rezoning application? I will close the public hearing at 6:07. This is actually in Ms. Buchanan's district, and it's within eyesight of the Blackberry District as well, just off of Hodges Farm Road. Well, if someone is, so desires to make an, a motion in regard to this application.
I'm making motion to approve the rezoning request as presented.
Second. We have a motion, second, any discussion? All in favor? It is five with one absent, Jennifer. Agenda item number sixteen, matters presented by the public. We did have someone as part of the board packet that mentioned that they wanted to speak tonight, unable to be here because of a sickness in the family, and so that person has withdrawn that. Is there anyone else desiring to address the board under matters presented by the public? Okay, seeing and hearing no indication as such, that will take us to general highway matters, if, Mr. Powell, if you'll step out and get, well, there she comes, right on cue.
Here she is.
We have with us Lisa Hughes from VDOT.
We're holding our secondary six-year plan public here, and so far we haven't received any comments, but just to let you know, while we're talking about the six-year plan, what we have on there, we're still working on the right-of-way for Gaines Road, pipe replacement, we've got some shoulder work, plan for Joseph Martin Highway, and some site distance improvements for Giles Road, and, you know, we just recently finished up the improvements along 220 Greensboro Road, the drainage improvements that were on their plan, so that's what we have scheduled in the future. The spring transportation meeting will be held May the 16th at 4:00 P.M., that'll be at the Salem Civic Center this year. Few other maintenance items, our mowing will be starting next Monday, we're going to start on our secondary routes, and then work towards our primaries, and we've got crews for each area of the county, so that should go a lot faster than it has in the past. We've got milling and paving coming up on Lee Ford Camp Road, that's next week also, we'll actually start at the end of this week, and we've been patching on Coler Road on 57 to get those rough places.
So, those are the night.
Yes, and that's all I have.
Do you think, Lisa, I saw in the paper here a few weeks ago, where a hundred years ago, they said they were appropriating money to make a concrete road from Marsville to get.
It is concrete underneath, it certainly is. That's the oldest, I'm right, it's our, it's our oldest primary road.
I wonder with the quarry over there now, like it is, and them big trucks coming down through there, do you think that's having some effect on that concrete?
It can, and heave and settle, but it is, there's concrete underneath, sure enough.
I was glad you're doing something, because there's a couple of places in that thing, it almost puts you in a river if you don't watch what you're doing.
And it's scheduled for repaving next year, but we just didn't wait, so we're, we're doing patches this year.
Good.
Anyone else have any items for Ms. Hughes?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wagner, do you have any other items for the board's consideration? Board members, do you have any other items? If not, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second, all in favor? It is five with one absent, everyone have a good evening.